Okay. It's high noon. I'll just ask that. Okay, a land acknowledgement. We acknowledge, appreciate the land in which we gather is the traditional unceded territory of the Mi'kmaq First Nation. Cindy, anyone phoning in? Okay, councillor Dron, are you there? Okay. I know councillor Matar couldn't make it because he had a previous commitment. Okay, call to order. Any declarations of conflict of interest? Seeing none. The agenda, it has presentation by T3, the Cassidy Voice, history of transit in Charlestown. I'm sure other questions will come up. And two protective and emergency service resolutions, several property cleanups, wildlife extraction, and secure property from further access. And then we have number five, move into a closed session under the municipal government act, section 119, subsection 1D, human resource matters, including labor relations or employee negotiations, so it's union negotiations. Move by councillor McKinnon? Okay, councillor, I mean seconded by councillor Bernard, all in favor? Good. Councillor Dron, are you there? Okay, he's not there. Okay. So we're going to start off. Mr. Cassidy, could you introduce yourself and your right-hand man? And we'll let it start.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Mike Cassidy, the owner of T3 Transit with my son.
Oh, you have to use... Just make sure it's hot.
Thank you very much, Mayor. My name is Mike Cassidy, the owner of T3 Transit with my son, Matthew.
We're going to let you open up under the presentation.
So if I want to get up and just move, or just to show a presentation, I guess I pretty well have to sit where I am to be able to...
Yes, because it's a live mic.
All right, then, thank you.
So we can get Matthew just to bring anything to you, and that would help.
Yeah. My kid will pick you up if you want him to stand there.
Oh, can I? Okay, thank you, Dan.
Councillor Dron, you're in.
Well, thank you very much, everybody.
Yes, I am, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So councillor Dron.
To have this type of session where we can come in after 19 years of operating transit in our city of Charlestown to give an update of where we have come from, 2005, where we are today, and suggestions and discussion points for where we can go tomorrow. There are individuals in this room which we can thank, and we can thank all of the 2005 council for giving us an opportunity to develop transit in our city of Charlestown. I consider it, back then, it was an experiment to see if transit would work in our capital city. It's been an incredible journey over the 19 years, and we're very, very pleased with what has been accomplished over that period of time. Just as a reminder, when you can kind of go up into your storage room and you pick up some old, old schedules and old numbers that we had back in 2005, we have this particular bulletin board where we have our schedules for the four buses that we started in 2005. And we were so proud in October, sure, in October 2005, which was our partial month, and November 2005 was a full month. We started September the 30th. We were proud that we did 3,000 passenger fares that month in November. We were excited. Today, in Charlestown, we do that by 2:00 in the afternoon on a typical Monday to Friday. A month's work is done from quarter to seven in the morning until 2:00. The other thing that struck me when you look at our scrap sheet there was we went up the avenue seven times to Winslow, and we came back down the avenue seven times in 2005. And if somebody had said, "Mike, have you got the schedule? Have you got it nailed down? Is this the one?" I would have said, "Yes, this is the one. The timings are good. It's going to work." Schedules evolve. Today, we go up the avenue 124 times compared to the seven that we did back in '05 when I thought I had it dead on, and we come back down 123 times compared to the seven that we did in 2005. That's the evolution. What you can do by 2:00 in the afternoon, the number of times and the frequency that we have done. But more importantly, when Matthew shows the data and the numbers here, it's interesting when you look at our total ridership for Charlestown. And if I could, please, halfway down, you see your T3 yearly ridership by municipality. We took it from '05. Remember, our partners Stratford and Cornwall joined us in '08. But if you come across to 2023, please, in those numbers, Matthew has his cursor right here in blue. Last year, Charlestown did 1.3 million passenger fares. It's interesting to note, for six months this year, we did 724,000 passenger fares. 2019, we almost hit 700,000, and we said in 2019 that we had a transit system, it was robust, it was better than any of our peer group, and we had it made. We thought we were on top of the mountain. Decimated in COVID, as we all know, but look at the bounce back that you see in 2023, 2024. Significantly, in the first six months of 2024 this year, almost 750,000. The back end of the year is always the busiest season. We will deliver over 750,000 passenger fares from July the 1st to the end of December this year. We will have Charlestown at 1.5 million fares in our present system, 30,000 service hours, an average of 50 passenger fares per service hour, when the average across this country for our peer group is between 20 to 25 passenger fares per service hour. We're double at 1.5 million, and that's an achievable number. I think it's beneficial for all to see Stratford and Cornwall are very beneficial partners for our system. It is beneficial to the customer, it's seamless travel from Cornwall through Charlestown to Stratford, if that is your mode of travel and the direction you want to go in, or the reverse thereof. Operationally and financially, there are synergies for Matthew and I as we run T3 by having the three municipalities. But please look at the numbers. Look at where Charlestown places. In 2023, Stratford did a total of 62,000, Cornwall did a total of 30,000, we did 1.3. For the first six months, we're 724,000, 37,000, and 16,000. Please, tremendous partners for customer convenience, operations, and financial synergies. Don't let the numbers fool you, but it shows you how strong we are in the capital. The other thing that I think is worth noting in the top part of the screen, many of you remember, in March of 2022, our provincial government under Dennis King suggested that we should have discounted passes, your $65 adult pass, your 45 senior student pass, the adults should drop to $20, senior and students should drop to 10. The belief, lower the price, drive ridership. Definitely, these $20 and $10 passes have worked to drive ridership. It can change your buying behavior by having a cheaper price. To give you an idea, if you go to April 2022, our first month, we did 924 passes discounted. Matthew will come right down to April 23rd at $1,793. Today, we're doing $2,500, $2,600 a month in passes. We'll jump back up. We gave K-12 was free in April of 2022, our first month, we did 3,200 students K-12, mainly your junior high and high school. Today, if you look, we are doing 14,000 a month in K-12. Those are significant numbers to think of, the discounted passes that we have, to think of K-12, to think of what we're doing in the capital city. We also wanted to include, so you'll have an understanding, please, of island transit. Your island transit ridership coming in from the east, the west, boarding in Summerside, we bring in approximately 225, 250 people a morning into Charlestown. And we did 66,000 one-way fares in the rural communities, January of this year till the end of June, six months. And if you look at the rural one-ways at 66,000, compare that to your Stratford Cornwall for first six months underneath the 2024 year-to-date, you'll see 37,000 and 16,000. Rural is robust, we are robust. And I want it, just as a highlight, please, for Maritime Bus, which is your regional bus service, as you know, COVID decimated the bus industry 2020 and 2021. Right now, with Maritime Bus and your regional Nova Scotia, New Brunswick, PEI, we are at 95% to 98% of our 2019 ridership. We are moving, on average, 425 people a day in this, in our system, and there's close to 75 to 100 islanders that leave the island or come back onto the island on a daily basis with the bus service that we operate. We don't show it on the screen, but please remember, when you see our motor coaches, Coach Atlantic, in front of a hotel, we're responsible for 85,000 room nights in the run of a year, those people traveling on a motor coach and needing accommodation, meals, events, the conventions, and the cruise ship. So we're very proud to come in front of you today with these type of numbers. I said, we have to thank the 2005 council for the opportunity. I said it was an experiment. In 2012, when we had our first consultant's report, I think we were still under that experimental mode. It should happen, let's give it another chance. 2019, when we hit close to 700,000 passenger fares, we were in a league of our own when you compared us to the peer group. Charlestown led the pack. When you're looking at municipalities, 50,000 or less, today, when you take our combined Stratford-Cornwall-Charlestown, we're in the next grouping of 50,000 to 150,000. The consultant's report recently shows that we're still pulling our weight in one of the best performing transit services across this country when it comes to our class and the amount of population in our peer group. I think the results of '19 stand for themselves. This council, I have to thank you. You gave us an extension till 2045 as your operator for transit. You had a belief in us in early 2023, understanding what we've done, and we thank you for the amendment to extend us from 2035 to 2045. The other thing that we have to realize for this council, I feel the decisions made by 2005 were courageous as political leaders. They had to be courageous to even introduce a transit system to our capital city. But today, this council has more responsibility. You've had a consultant's report delivered to you that shows you that transit is strong, transit is here to stay. Your responsibility, and I think this is even harder than the '05 council, what are you going to do with transit? Where is transit? Where is transit going to go? Where is your commitment to transit as we grow as a municipality, as we look at climate change, as we look at electrification, as we try to make sure people are not dependent upon their cars and they can use public transit? It's going to be your policy decisions, it's going to be your financial commitment going forward that is going to reshape T3. We are not done. After 19 years, we are good. You could almost say we are one of the best. University Avenue is 63% of our ridership. Your perimeter of the city with Route 2 and Route 3 and Route 23 is 34% of our ridership. You have major routes. The balance of our routes make up approximately 3% of our ridership. But our city, if you take the concept that you have Route 2, 3, 23 that go around the city, if you have Route number one as the spine, we are doing very well. Yes, University Avenue is busy. University Avenue at 63% gets about 38% of our service hours. We are very careful with how we allocate the service hours. Routes 2, 3, 23 that are doing roughly 34% of our business, we have 47% of our service hours allocated. In the outlying areas, we have 15% of our hours as we try to develop those outlining areas and listening to consultants to suggest what can we do going forward. The consultant's report, in our opinion, the number one takeaway has been you have a transit system. Your transit system is strong, and your transit system can grow, subject to how council wants to decide and take on the responsibility for this growth. That was a very, very positive. But I think the consultant's report leaves us with a few discussion points that we just wanted to bring up today. And the first one is, please, we have a consultant's report in front of you that has a 10-year strategy. I think it's important to understand when we have the consultant's report and the 10-year strategy, we have a system here that's not broke. We have 1.5 million passenger fares for this year. If you look at the consultant's report and they were talking about their projections, if you spend more money, where are we going to be in 2029? Where are we going to be in 2034? On page 66 of the report, if you just want to have an earmark to look at it, they were suggesting that if we do nothing in 2029, we'll be at 1.6 million passenger fares. We will break 6,500 passenger fares a day come this September when UPEI, Hall and College come back. The new year for transit is really September. People back off vacations and school starting. We'll deliver 1.8 million passenger fares in 2025, and our system, the way it is today, is capable of handling that. We might be able to stretch our system at 7,000 a day if we could keep that happening. We might be able to use the present network and get to 1.9 or 2 million with the present system. So please, when they talk about growth to benchmark, suggesting if you did spend money, that we would be at 1,778,000, those numbers are in the system now, the way we have it organized and how the network operates. So we're not broke, but we have such a wonderful opportunity to grow with what we have. But when it comes to the 10-year plan, we have to say to ourselves, is the 10-year plan suggesting that we are going to become very dependent on public transit? And is that the policy and strategy that you, as a council, have to complete over a 10-year term? Again, are we going to make sure that in the next 10 years, there is a dramatic change in car dependency? Because the consultant's report certainly wants the service hours, wants the buses, wants the change in routes. If we feel we will become what I would say, no longer a car culture, but we will be public transit, we'll be active transportation. I feel we're a car culture still today. We were a car culture when we started in 2019, and I believe we've come a long way, but we're still a car culture. The situation that's happening for our terminal on Grafton Street suggests very clearly, when you have downtown business not wanting to give up parking meters so people can drive, they can park close to the downtown stores so that they can shop. We are a car culture, and it might be 10, it could be 15, it could be 20, it could be 30 years before we can reach some of this no-longer car culture, but we understand that we all have to have a responsibility using public transit, active transportation. Your consultant's report gives us a little bit of a roadmap to consider, but I know that there's one council suggesting that the report appears to be "to all transit in" is the quote, and we're a little bit leery of how much money it may take over the next 10 years. But as a council here in Charlestown, please, you got to understand, 10 years is a very short period of time, very short period of time. But we have not spent a lot of money over the last 19 years. And regardless of are we a car culture for 10, 15, 20, 30 years, this council has to be ready to spend operating dollars. We're going to spend capital dollars, we have the federal government, we have the provincial government. We're looking at our contribution, where we have to pay roughly 27% of the cost of a new bus, 75% of that number is Charlestown's. Capital money is needed, it's reasonable with government funding, but it's your operating dollars. And when we were speaking with Anna Keenan, Anna is correct when she states, we could be looking at $300,000 in a NASK, $400,000 in a NASK for extra operating money as we grow transit over time. That is a true number. One bus, one bus route with 16 hours of service is close to $300,000. Just when you stop and think, as we want to grow, even if it takes longer than 10 years, we're still going to have growth, but that is in front of us. So please, we do have to spend time talking at committee level, what is the 10-year strategy, and how do we execute? I can go through all of the items if you wish, and I can open up for questions, or would you like for me just to do a discussion point, stop, and before I go on to the four-member partnership, would you like questions to be asked now, or do you want me to walk through the whole agenda?
What's the wish? Do you want to take a break and ask some questions right now? Any questions? No?
Mark, I have a comment.
Okay, hold on.
If you could just add more, when I'm looking at discussion points on future service expansion, and you know, the numbers are great, it's exciting to see, but we're still lacking in some parts of our city where we need to look at expansion service again. I know back in 2018, we did do a stint where we looked at East Royalty as it was still in development stage, but again, now that development was supposed to take 20 years, and in five years, we're pretty much, pretty much there. And I'm really asking councillor Bernard if you could at least look at that possibility and a commitment from city council to really, to look at future expansion in East Royalty again.
You already asked me that. A little while ago. Yeah, no, I agree. I think especially with Montgomery Heights, as it's exploded. I think since we did the last trial, I'm not sure if that was a quarter done. Just while I got the mic though, I'm just wondering, Mike or Matthew, so I think you were saying it's 1.3 million passenger fares that we've been up to, a little over 1.3 million. Projected in 2025, you're looking at 1.8 million.
Yes, councillor, we'll come in at 1.5 and change this year.
Okay.
And that's based on 5,000 passenger fares per service day in Charlestown, Monday to Friday. This September, we're going to be hitting 6,000, 6,500, and possibly, you're going to see 7,000 passenger fares. And that's going to take you up and parachute you into that high 1.7, close to 1.8 with what we're doing right now.
So that was my question. So, and you feel you can handle that with the present system, with your present buses?
The present system will be maxed out, but we feel that we can get close to those numbers under the present system, the way our network operates right now.
Good. Good.
Okay.
Any...
Go on.
Do you have any projections yourself where you find we'll be in passenger numbers within the next five years?
Councillor Bernard, I can't say that I could give you a realistic number, because that's going to be based on the growth. We're going to have to go at committee level to decide what routes, what areas, what frequency. What you're going to see, now please, I'll just jump when it comes to the routes.
And the reason I ask that is because of the spike that it's taken just in the last year and a half, two years, it's unbelievable, that spike. And just do we see that leveling off? Is that, if that spike's continuing, or do we know?
To answer your question, I think there's going to be a leveling off. When you look at our discounted monthly passes, we've been at that 2,500, 2,600 now for the last seven or eight months. When you look at K-12, we've been at 13,000, 14,000 a month for the last six or seven months. UPEI, Hall and College's enrollment, well, I do not think will be as great as what it has been in the last 10 years on an annual basis. Immigration into our city, will that be more constant than what it was? But you're going to see development. And your question is, maybe the routes in our system will not have to change drastically with the big producers today, but the frequency has to change. And I believe Anna Keenan will say, frequency is freedom. When you do not have a car, where you do not have access to a car, frequency does work. We've seen it on the avenue, we've seen 30-minute service. Where you look at your development, you look at Hillsborough development, you look at what's going on in Mount Ebert Road, you look at what is going on in the Hidden Valley-Winslow area, and you look at the proposals, and our family has a huge proposal identified across from Prince's Auto where there's 1,800 units, anybody that wants a picture afterwards, we have it to show what we're doing. I estimate that our population in Charlestown is in the high 40s. I don't know if I could say 50,000 today, but I know if someone said we did an actual count and we're at 48,000, I would believe them. I don't think it's 42,000, I don't think it's 43,000, in my mind. If you look at where the population is going to grow in our city, you're going to be out in the royalty crossing area. I think that we're going to see an uptown develop there. We have a vibrant downtown, we have our commercial, we have our retail, we, but we do not have an uptown residential community. We have our routes 2 and 3 and 23 and Route 1, where it's just going to be added frequency with more population, they're going to have to see buses more often. And if council is willing to look and earmark funds that city employees bring to you based on discussions with us, to say, "We need more frequency." People don't want... People don't want to wait an hour for a bus. If I have to wait for an hour of bus, I'm going to call a friend. I'm not going to sell my car. But if the frequency is every 30 minutes, or in some case if it's going to be 15, that's where we're going to see the ridership build. But I can guarantee you that our system today, if you did nothing with us, we should be able to get to that 1.8. But we'll have a comment that there are certain areas that are not being serviced. And as a council, this is where your responsibility is greater than 2005. You have to deal with a transit operation today. And not only are you seeing an explosion on our busy routes that are going to need more buses, more frequency, you need areas that are growing that don't have a bus system, or they have an inadequate frequency bus system, using East Royalty, for example. Buses are going to have to get into East Royalty. Yes, you're going to see direct busing into the QEH in behind with the mental health campus, in behind the 1,200 units in Hillsborough. But it's going to be Hillsborough, it's going to be the mental health campus that's going to help QEH. When you hear your consultant's report, they mention East Royalty, they mentioned the hospital direct, and they mentioned the airport. You can have a bus system leaving the mall, going through Mount Ebert Road for all those apartments, into MacLair Drive, into the airport, and then reverse thereof within 30 minutes. And you can give frequency to the airport. You can change Hillsborough slightly, and you can get Hillsborough delivered into the Sherwood Fire Hall as a hub and back downtown as a hub, and you can almost have 20-minute service. But council, everything we talk about, if I mention a bus, it's $300,000. And it's going to be 27% of $800,000 municipal contribution for a bus? Or if it's an electric bus, it's going to be $1.6 million, 27%. And then you pay 75% of the 27%. The capital money is there, and that won't be your big decision. Your biggest decision is, do you have it in the budget when staff and T3 come to you saying, we may need a couple buses? We were fortunate over a year ago where the province came in with 475,000 for an expansion to assist us. But remember, the argument was, province, you should come in with a $475,000 expansion to assist in operating money? Because look at what we have done as a municipality with K to 12 ridership. Look at what we've done with the monthly passes and the extra buses that we had to put on, the extra frequency on our routes to be able to look after that demand. Definitely, the province has a role to assist us. And I go back to our four-member partnership. T3 is your operator. We have Stratford, we have Cornwall, and we have Charlottetown. We've had a very, very good relationship over 19 years with Charlottetown, 16 years when you look at '08, the introduction of Stratford and Cornwall. Stratford and Cornwall, if they were here today, would say, Charlottetown, we want to stay working with you. We want our residents to be able to travel seamlessly throughout our three municipalities. We like how this works. Yes, council, there could be a question when it comes down to sharing of costs between the three municipalities. Is it 75%? 15% Stratford, 10% Cornwall, as it is today and has been for a good number of years? Or do we look at service hours allocation? Do we look at ridership allocation? And is 15% 12%? Is 15% 17%? Is the 10% Cornwall 6% or 7%? Those are discussions that we have to have. But we as an operator are here under contract, subject to performance, subject to you people wanting a transit service in your city until 2045. We feel that there's a working relationship that can happen. The next discussion point, though, please, entrepreneurial versus contractor. The consultants brought this up, and it's worthy of a lengthy, lengthy discussion. In my opinion, and I know that I spoke to the Municipal Federation in 2022, 2021, Charlottetown hosted all the municipalities at Peak Ski in 2021, and I remember talking about our entrepreneurial way of doing business here back, started in 2005. There were mayors that come up to me afterwards and said, it's just marvelous what you people have. I don't know if there's another entrepreneurial model. We as a family took on the risk back in '05, give us so much money subsidy, we'll go fight for the fare box, and we treated it as a business. Your money was like our money, and we worked awfully hard to build the ridership that is cost-effective. To put it in context, you gave us $540,000 in 2005 for a four-bus system. You had a $60,000 commitment to a seniors bus. We rolled the seniors bus into a regular route, AM, PM, peak. We had $600,000 to work with. If we had done nothing over the last past 19 years in Charlottetown, with CPI and inflation, you'd be paying about $1 million for four routes in a seniors operation. Today, if you back off your government subsidy, do not include shelters, do not include Wi-Fi, do not include the fuel subsidy, but take it back to the way it was in '05, you're spending approximately $1.4 million compared to the million if you had done nothing. We've got a great system, and it is cost-effective. You can do the numbers all you wish. But here's what happens with the entrepreneurial system, everybody. When you needed us, you needed us, and we took the risk. And that was no secret, everybody, every council before you, they knew exactly what was going on. We were building it, but it's something that we wanted to do. Now, it can be said, your fare box is your fare box. Your fare box is not going to go down. With that being said, city staff could suggest to you rightfully, the fare box is not going to go down. There's a cost of operation. The fare box could increase. Well, why does T3 Cassidys get the fare box? Let's change the rules. It was okay when we didn't have a whole bunch of fare box, but now that we do, gee, should we be looking at a different model? In this entrepreneurial model, do we take on some of the risk? And as a city, we take on the fare box, we take on routing, and we pay a fixed fee. Because in other municipalities, companies like ourselves, Matthew and I, you would pay us so much an hour. And we would just go to work for you. And at the end of the day, we would drop by City Hall here with the fare box, and we would dump the money in, and off we go. And whatever you tell us to do, we'll do it. We fought for everything we got from the city over 19 years, I know we did. We suggested routes. You were good enough to assist and help pay for the routes that we suggested. You haven't gone wrong, you have the best ridership, and you have the most cost-efficient system. But here's the question, is it time to look at a brand-new agreement? Because the agreement of T3 that's going to be extended to 2045, Matthew and I would like to suggest, if the agreement should be changed, for all the right reasons, for the good of T3 Transit, then let's open up the agreement. And one item that's going to come in front of you is the entrepreneurial model over. Do we pay the Cassidys X amount and we take it on? Now, Stratford and Cornwall would tell you today, no, we don't want to do that. However, I don't know if Stratford and Cornwall would really understand what does it entail in a contractor model. They would quickly say, if you come off the entrepreneurial, the risk goes to us, we don't want to accept the risk, leave it with the T3 operator. But there's a very good argument, council. If the fare box is going to increase greater than the cost of operating your system, and you can use that extra fare box money to reinvest into your system, do we walk away from the entrepreneurial model? But you might say, we got the risk. We got to do the routing. Consultants, can they give you the routes? Or are the Cassidys pretty good at giving you the right routes? The consultants did a good job in your consultant's report, but I'll tell you, it's a B report. That's what you get from a consultant, it's a B report. Now, please, a B report is a very good standing as a consultant's report. But there would be route examples in that consultant's report that we would like to debate, we would disagree with. We know our present system. We understand that routes have to be designed for the future, and maybe some of our customers have to learn to change a little bit because we can get a better route, no different than what we're doing this year, where we're changing how Route 2 is going to be identified, Route 3 is, how it's going to be identified. And that's growth. But you are going to have to make a decision, what is the model between entrepreneurial versus contractor? The routes are going to come up, and remember, we've got a route right now, just as an example, we follow the official draft when it comes to your housing and the plan for zoning. We were believing in St. Peters Road, Belvedere Avenue, University Avenue, UPI to the mall before the consultants for your official plan ever came here. We understood what we call a spine. University Avenue is a very direct spine. St. Peters Road, Belvedere Avenue up into the University Avenue, in our minds, in our opinion, is a spine, and we like how it works. We like a fire hall at the Sherwood to be a mini hub with what we have. And those are things that we would like to suggest at committee level that we look at hard and as we come and recommend routes to you. The last discussion point, was there a question?
Council Twill, do you got a hot button there? Question.
Mike, thank you for being here today. I want you to know that some of the discussions we had previously in the last two or three months, I did request, Council Bernard, the chair of the committee agreed, that we would have you in as well. I thought it would have been advantageous when we had the consultant here and her staff making a presentation that you and your son would have been here as well, but that didn't take place, but you're here now. So I think it's important that council has all that information. It's important to have that historical perspective of, you know, how we started back 2005, the changes that were made when the first consultants ever brought on board. You mentioned the spine, I think one of the significant changes back then, I was involved with that, that particular committee, I worked alongside with yourself, Donna Waddell, and, you know, on University Avenue where stops every 15 minutes. I think it's, I think it's been a tremendous, tremendous advantage to this city, not only for transporting residents, students to the University of Prince Edward Island, but out to the mall where, you know, the major depot is. And I think it's worked out well, I really do. Now, we've, we've got to, we've got to make some amendments and look at future routes and expansions. And some of the things you're talking about now, I'm glad you're highlighting, you know, the different philosophical models, whether it's entrepreneurial or the contractor model. Besides that, you obviously went through the consultant's report with a fine-toothed comb. Can you, besides what you've, what you've already stated thus far, can you give us a thumbnail sketches as to? From a comparative analysis perspective, can you give us things that you agree with in the consultant's report? And can you give, give us in point form, the, you know, the recommendations in the consultant's report or their perspective that you simply don't agree with? Because, as you know, when council's debating this, we want to make sure we make the right decision, we make an informed decision, and see where we go from here. Because, you know, you talked about population growth, that's not going to stop. I think one of the things you talked about, you know, what's the population of the city of Charlottetown? I think the other thing that should be mentioned is that, not even during the peak times of the year, we're servicing well over 100,000 people a day, and that's not even during the peak time of the year. So I think we have to make allowances for that as well, because a lot of people will come into the city, they don't have transportation, they jump on the transit. So we're looking at that. But that's one of the things I wanted to ask here today, Mike. Please, give me the significant points that you agree with on the, on the consultant's report and the significant points that you totally disagree with. And that's what I'm looking forward to hearing personally. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Twill. Want to take that on, Mike, or do you want to summarize it?
Thank you, Council Twill. As I go through the report in my mind and the time that Matthew and our staff had with the consultant and with Charlottetown's staff, you have to remember what a consultant's report is. They're coming in, and they're doing an assessment. We welcomed the assessment in 2010, and we welcomed this assessment last year with the report this year. First thing in the report, T3's done a good job. Charlottetown has good ridership. Charlottetown has beat every one of their peers across the country. That's the number-one thing in the report. It's like anything else. I've taken this course from September to December, I want a mark. And the only reason I want a mark is a hope of pass, but I want to know how good I was. Anybody, right? Tell me my mark. Well, if someone is going to pay money to do a consultant's report on what Matthew and I do and staff each and every day, I want a mark. And I think we got a good mark from the consultant, number one. Number two, the consultant is saying what we're saying, you need transit, and transit is going to get bigger, and you're going to have to invest capital equipment and operating dollars. We disagree slightly with the timeframe of 10 years. I do not think council has to have an anxiety attack to say, oh my goodness, this all has to be done. My lens sees us as a car culture still. My lens says we have time to do this properly. My lens says we're going to have to commit to buses, though. Three to $400,000 a year, extra in this budget, is not going to be off. You have to be ready to spend that. All-in, one councillor said in another jurisdiction, there's a fear that it's all-in. We have one jurisdiction that has asked Matthew and I to do their routing. They disagree with the routing in the consultant's report for their municipality, and they're asking us to come up. We were very, very fortunate that Anna Keenan allowed Matthew and our supervisory staff to have two sessions with the consultant. We did our best to suggest routes. In some cases, they took our suggestions, naturally, it's not our report, it's the consultant's report, and they have routes that are a little bit different than what we would do. We are trying to say to staff and committee level that we would like to have more input on what is happening now, because some of the routes, maybe they work, but we don't feel that it's the way we want to do it, and here is what we think we can accomplish doing it this way. Case in point, I wouldn't blow up Route Number 3, St. Peters Road, Belvedere Avenue, into the University Avenue and into the mall, those type of things. So please, it's the routing discussion. Not that the consultants are wrong, but they do not know our city. We had very good results with the consultants when they were doing Number 2 and how they were going to reroute Number 2 when we suggested to them, you can't do it this way, you have to do it this way, and they listened and they changed it to the way our people travel with what we have. And they listened and they changed it to the way our people travel with what we have. We suggested if you're going to do anything on what we call the east side of the city, you missed a hub at the Sherwood Fire Hall, Sherwood Business Center. That's a hub. We know it's a hub. We've been doing this for 19 years. Would you please put a hub in? They put a hub in, Counsel Twill. But in other recommendations, they said, no, we don't think that we would like to do that. Well, then we stopped. It's open for discussion in my mind. To make sure you have a good 10-year plan, that you do your routes for the future, not just for the present day, you make sure that T3 is open-minded enough and that they do want to change for the greater good. But I want to tell you something. We can change. We are here for the greater good. Two things. Previous administration of Charlottetown said, we got to look at different sites to build a brand-new public transit facility. We said, fine, go ahead. Look at your two or three sites. They came back, third-party review, and they said, the best site is your site. No influence by us. Our site wasn't even in question at the time. Fine, you want to come on our site. For you to receive provincial, federal money, Charlottetown should be the owner of the deed of a particular property if you want to build infrastructure. Makes eligibility criteria acceptance by the government very easy. We were asked by the administration that we had to sell our building to allow Charlottetown to be the owner of 57 Mount Arden Road, to get eligibility for $15 million approximately. Most people in this room know that if you own real estate, it's nice to keep owning it and it's a nice legacy item for your own children and your grandchildren to have. We made that decision. For the greater good, we sold our property to the city of Charlottetown for the greater good of transit. The consultant's report is going to make us talk about entrepreneurial versus contractor. That's a plus, Counsel Twill, for this report. This counselor's, this consultant's report is going to force us to talk about the operating model. Not talking about whether T3 stays or not, but it's going to talk about the operating model. Is it going to be entrepreneurial? Is it going to be a contractor? And I think that is healthy. Staff are right when they say to you, if the fare box is going to increase greater than the cost of production, that extra fare box money can be reinvested into the system. But remember, there's municipalities who don't want that. Is there a hybrid? And I just throw this out, just for discussion purposes. Listen, T3, maybe can you have a hybrid entrepreneurial? Like, our staff are right. They want that extra fare box money to reinvest in our system. But can you guys do the routes? Can it still be entrepreneurial? But anything over a fixed number of operation of cost, the majority of that fare box goes to the municipality. And there's a small incentive to keep the operator entrepreneurial to fight for every possible passenger fare. That might be something to think about.
Yeah.
The report, Counsel Twill, we're good and we're here to stay. Let's talk about the model. Let's talk about the routes and the electrification. We have to slow down on electrification. Halifax has told Matthew that they're into this electrification and they're telling every transit system to slow down. And Matthew, can I let you?
Yeah, and Mike, that, Michael, that's your last point, right, on, on your, your agenda? Yeah. So, Matthew?
So, yeah, the transition to electric, myself and Anna Keenan, we were both in Halifax in May for the QDA conference. And we had the opportunity to tour the electric facility, the new electric facility in Raga Lake for Halifax Transit. So they took possession of one tran, electric transit bus probably about a year ago at this point. And they are taking delivery of their other 58 or 59 currently. The first one was used for testing and piloting. They put 5,000 pounds of sandbags on it and drove it up and down, set it a little hill and figured out all how it was going to work and all the different pieces. And Norman, his last name skips me at the moment, but he was actually one of our original consultants on Woods. He was the director of fleet for Edmonton when they did their electric transition or started their electric transition. And now he, they hired him out of retirement in the consulting world to be the director of the transition in Halifax. And from my conversations with him and the relationship that we have with him previously and a couple of conversations thereafter, and it was an eye-opening process to me in terms of, you know, this isn't apples to apples in terms of running a diesel transit bus and running an electric transit bus. This is a huge amount of money being spent on electric vehicles and a huge amount of money being spent on the infrastructure. And when we talk about the future transit here in Charlottetown, we talk about how are we going to service the growth and service the population and do the expansion? How do we, you know, there's going to come a time, there's only so many dollars to go around. And if you have $1 to spend, do you want to spend it on expanding the routes or do you want to expend it on build by an electric transit bus? And I think that all the big municipalities are still treating this very much as the pilot phase and how, you know, they're dipping their toe into it and how does it move forward? That being, and again, beef, I am, we're the operator. So my respect of this is biased because I know that our responsibility is to make sure that every day the buses are on the road to move the 6,000 to 7,000 people around our city. And the diesel bus is a proven technology. And we know how it works. It's doable. It goes to work every day and we know, there's no what ifs about it. Whereas these big municipalities do have the what ifs. And, but, all that being said, you know, there are manufacturers that aren't making diesel buses anymore. We do have to transition to electric buses. We do have to transition to some form of zero-emissions buses. Is it hydrogen? Is it electric? I don't know the answer to that. So we do have to transition to that, but it has to be, in our opinion, a measured and balanced approach. It can't be all in. We have to be able to say, okay, let's walk before we run. Let's not go headfirst into this. And how do we balance the two? Because it is a very expensive game, 1.6, 1.7 million dollars for an electric transit bus, plus all the infrastructure. We need to be there. It's part of our future 100%. But how do we get there and how do we make sure we preserve the current operation and the current growth we need at the same time as transitioning into this electric space or the zero-emissions space?
So, Matthew, we're going to, like, we're at 1 o'clock. I know we're just, the clock's ticking. Just quickly, Michael, how many providers in the Atlantic provinces use the triple P? Private, public? How many, how many municipalities?
Oh, Mayor, the pure entrepreneurship, the pure entrepreneurship.
Triple P like we have here, how many?
None in the entrepreneurial. I know that Pacific Western, Matthew, and TransDev, would there be 27 municipalities?
Sorry, in Atlantic Canada, the years, no other triple Ps.
Zero.
The only, it recently happened where an operator is doing the pair of transits or the patent the elephant service in Fredericton for four vehicles.
Yeah, that's.
But as the traditional transit, there's no one in Atlantic Canada. When you get up into Ontario, into Alberta, into BC, is there 20 to 30 different municipalities that might have a contractor model?
Of hundreds of municipalities.
But not, not entrepreneurial, like.
It's a triple P I'm talking. Because, just quickly, this year's budget for transit, 2.3 million, that's what we're budgeting, right? Then if I go to the capital budget, it is, um, for transit, it is, mine is, partner funding, 1.6 million. But that is an expenditure of almost $6 million. So I think we're getting good value for dollar when you look at it. And Matthew, just quickly on the transition from diesel to electric, this race to net zero 2040, we're committed to it. But you know what? The more people that we put in buses, the more people that leave their cars home, that reduces our carbon footprint. So that's a big boost. So the more you can get those numbers up, which I know you are doing a great job because your operation is reliable, it's dependable, and it's affordable. So I think we're on the right track. Matthew?
So, Mayor, just on that point of people riding the bus and leaving their car at home, again, this is told to me by the executive director, sorry, the, the exec, the executive director of Halifax Transit. He says that if there's seven people on one of his diesel buses, it's carbon neutral. And for every time there's more than seven people on that bus, we're saving, you know, we're improving the carbon footprint. So as you know now, there's a lot, like, 50 passenger fares per service hour, where a lot more than seven people on the bus at any given time.
Counsel Ramsey?
Thank you, thank you, Mike and Matthew, for the fantastic presentation. And I'm glad you hit on, on the electrical thing. This is just a comment. It was on the news last night, how there's a plant in Kingston, Ontario last night is not going full, because they're still going with diesel and gas for all their vehicles, a Ford plant, I think it was. I don't know if anyone's seen that in the news last night in the national. So, you know, so just like, as you said to Matthew, we, we have to slow down a little bit because they are very expensive and that. And if we can keep our diesels going, up until then, the price drops, I think we're doing a great job. Thank you very much.
Counsel, Counsel Bernard?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to say, thank you for, Matthew and, and Mike for coming in. Wanted to give counsel, especially the newer councils, a little bit of background of how it got started, how we've grown to where we are today. Obviously, we're going to be, our committee's going to be meeting here this week? Friday. So there will be recommendations to come into the next council meeting. But again, I think it was good information for everybody to hear and I again want to thank you, taking the time to come in and explaining this to us. So, thank you very much.
Counsel Dron, any questions? Michael, do you want to sum up? Thank you very much, Michael and Matthew. Great presentation. I knew it would be handled very well by both of you.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you very much, Council. Thank you very much, staff. We have a wonderful opportunity in this city to grow the T3 transit product. There's going to be challenges and there's going to be risks and we're just going to have to manage them. There's one thing in this city, we have grown based on evidence of ridership that we thought was going to be in an area. We worked hard to make sure that if we went into an area, that we were going to have ridership. And remember, 20 passenger fares per service hour is the benchmark. And we tried never to waste money at the same time you wanted to expand. I think Counsel McCabe has a very good point. We tried East Royalty. And East Royalty is suggesting today that we go back in and be more robust in our frequency and make sure that we can develop that area of our city. The airport and the QEH is going to follow. Hillsborough is going to follow with what we have. And I think we can have a management plan if council's willing to invest in capital equipment, the right equipment at the right time. Diesel maybe before electric. And we're doing that now, Council. You've done a tremendous job to date on that. But we have to free up the operating dollars because when committee and, and city staff come to you, please, 300, $400,000 a year in expansion is not going to be a big number. It's going to be a realistic number in our mind. Thank you very much.
And Michael, just lastly, the contract is signed for 2020, 2045, correct?
Yes, the last amendment that was signed off by council, approved by council resolution in early 2023, said that when we do up the agreement, the 2035 termination is now extended for another 10 years to 2045, subject to performance by the operator.
Well, as I always say, Counsel Twill, those years of enlightenment, 2005, 2004, we did some great things. Yes, Counsel Twill?
Yeah. Mike, one of the things you didn't talk about, and there's a real focal point in our community, is the CDP and the East Link Center. Has that been factored into the equation as being a hub as well? Especially with all the activities that are taking place at, at those two facilities? I would think that the transit would play an indispensable role, transporting people in, on the hockey games or different events, whether it be for harness racing or entertainment at the civic center.
Counsel Twill, it wouldn't be a hub, but it's been identified as Kensington Road is a spine. And the spine needs busing and the spine needs frequency and the spine needs extended hours of service as we grow up to that 10 o'clock or 11 o'clock in the evening. And that's part of that 10-year plan where you do not need to have a vehicle to get around Charlottetown. We're going to have routes. We're going to have hours of service extended and we're going to have frequency. And Kensington Road and always what we call that whole entertainment center on Kensington Road has always been a focal point to us.
Thank you to the Cassidy too. Thank you very much and have a great day. Thank you. Okay. Counsel McCabe, we're going to move on to 4B. Two protective emergency services resolutions. Want to read the first one, please? Thank you, gentlemen.
Moved by Counsel Ramsey, seconded by Counselor Beck. Be it resolved that the public works manager be authorized to cut grass, remove any trees, garbage and other materials or debris, dangerous or otherwise, clean up and properly dispose of the same at the owner's expense at the following properties in accordance with the terms of the Dangerous, Hazardous and Unsightly Bylaw of the City of Charlottetown. And that pictures were taken of the noted properties listed below without satisfactory action taken to resolve the issue by the respective property owner. 19 Ashburn Crescent, PID 372672, warning posted on May 24, 2024. 14 Maple Avenue, PID 384156, warning posted on June 3, 2024. 62 Highland Avenue, PID 354985, warning posted on June 5, 2024. 16 Liberty Crescent, PID 791889, warning posted on June 18, 2024. 3 Hutchinson Court, PID 571653, warning posted on July 12, 2024.
Okay, looks pretty. Questions being called by Counsel McCabe, seconded by Counselor Ramsey? Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Counsel Dron, are you there? Oh, you must be gone. Okay. Next one, please.
Moved by Counsel Ramsey, seconded by Counselor Beck. Be it resolved that the public works manager be authorized to exterminate wildlife and secure said building from future access of wildlife, dispose of the same at the owner's expense in accordance with the terms of the Dangerous, Hazardous and Unsightly Bylaw of the City of Charlottetown at the following property located at 295 Richmond Street, PID 341172, warning posted on May 30, 2024. Pictures taken, satisfactory action to resolve the issue not taken.
Moved by Counsel McCabe? No, did you call for the question? Okay. Question's called, seconded by Counsel Ramsey. All those in favor? Okay, eight zero.
Your worship, may I have a comment on these two resolutions?
The resolution's already passed.
Oh, okay. I just want to say, okay.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, Counsel Ramsey.
No, I just want to say that we just met this past Wednesday. So we, we sped up the process on this because we knew we were meeting again today. So that saves us from going an extra week of waiting or two weeks when our next council meeting is. So thank you very much for all that, Counsel.
Thank you, Counsel Ramsey, for the expedience. Well done, well done. Okay. Well done. Okay. Number five, motion to move into a closed session of council as per section, as per the MGA Municipal Act. Section 119, subsection 1D, Human Resources Matters, including labor relations or employee negotiations, and it's under union negotiations. Question? Question called by Counsel McKinnon? Seconded by Counsel Bernard? All in favor? Okay, right on, seven zero.